All right, thank you so much. Tonight is Monday, June 20th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we will stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, and to the regard of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before going into our first call to the public, I just wanted to make an update so everybody in the audience, as well as TV land and future airings, have this information. We have set a work session on code enforcement. The date for that will be June 27th at 6:00 PM. We have also set a work session on town properties on Ruggles Road regarding the Eco Station Water Barn, and that date is going to be July 11th at 6:00 PM. Again, we want to encourage everybody to come out, communicate, and thank you in advance. At this time, we will have our first call to the public. Call to the public for public comments on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. If you are online and you would like to comment at this time, please go ahead and raise your hand. I do have one that was submitted, and I see one hand raised. At this time, Ms. Bonnie Bariola.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I am Bonnie Bariola and live on Shan Drive in Maricopa County, no incorporated city or town. Government is supposed to be of the people, by the people, and for the people. When the decision to build the additional Public Works Building with its associated uses, including the recycling center, the first two segments of the saying were omitted. The "of the people" and "by the people" was omitted, and only the final phrase, "for the people," was used. When the former Town Manager left, his quote in the newspaper of his accomplishments were about a half dozen books of plans for the future. Unfortunately, it appears none of these plans was a feasibility study outlining the best place in Florence to build a new Public Works Building with its associated uses. Staff's presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 2nd, 2022 appears to be the first time the residents learned this project would be constructed in the midst of their single-family residence, even showing them the final architectural construction documents had been prepared and telling them the town did not have to follow their own zoning codes. Unless council and staff really want to create more drama and additional public backlash, you all will immediately stop the current process and conduct a feasibility study to determine the best location for such an industrial facility. Surely, you realize this industrial facility is not an appropriate use in a single-family neighborhood. Your zoning code was ignored, which states such a use requires two public hearings, meaning it would be "of the people" and "by the people." It would appear you would get a resounding request for denial at these public hearings. As a trained and experienced land use planner, a work session is not the appropriate action to take for this Public Works Building and associated uses.
Thirty seconds? Oh, one minute.
Such assessment usually is for council discussion only, with no decisions made. It does not allow the public to share their input unless the mayor permits it. A suggestion is a non-biased feasibility study that includes input from the public on which one of the 11 parcels of land the town owns would be more appropriate for such an industrial facility. This process would include input of and by the people, and not only for the people. I have more specific suggestions for such a plan at your request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bariola. And just to comment and to clarify, staff is going to be bringing back in front at that time all of that background information that was there. When you reference "of" and "by," this was in response to an issue that had occurred at Heritage Park. There were some recycling and garbage containers that were placed there back in 2018, and it had continued to accumulate garbage and people dumping that did not live in our area. It became very unsightly, and in response to the residents that had communicated at that time, our staff, our council, and with feedback from our citizens in the community, placed the receptacles there prior, and then came up with the Eco Station Plan that was communicated at council. It actually took an act of council to purchase the property to which that Eco Station/Water Barn would be built on. We've communicated in the past as a council that we value the input of our citizens, and we always hear you when you talk. So when citizens came forward and had concerns, the first thing we did was put a pause on it. And again, we want to bring all of our stakeholders together so that way we can move forward for the best interest in and of the community, because we are all Florence, and we all care for Florence. So, thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Sherri Har, and she's online if you would like to unmute her at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. I just muted my mic, so you're superseded. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I wanted to follow up and say, Bonnie, thank you very much for what you indicated. I reiterate the same concerns. And then also a follow-up, Mayor. On June 6th, two weeks ago, you had requested for Ms. Garcia to reach out to me to schedule a meeting for you and I to meet to go over some concerns I had with the process with selecting Town Manager. I did receive an email on June 7th from Ms. Garcia. I received an email on June 7th from Ms. Garcia in which I provided her three dates. As of today's date, which tomorrow will be two weeks, I have not received anything else. That's all I have.
Thank you. We will be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. I do not see anybody, Ms. Ramirez. And then Courtney afterwards, if you could just fill out a paper, that would be helpful with Ms. Garcia after you speak. Thank you.
So, my name is Courtney Ramirez, and I reside at 729 West Bunker Hill, right here in town. And I agree with Bonnie too, especially with the whole "for the people," right? Like, this is our town. We've got tax increase on the agenda tonight, and I don't remember any of us residents voting to have the city raise our taxes again. We just got taxed for sewer. This economy's going to crap. Our gas is high. I have seen several reports that Arizonans are paying about $733 more a month just to live, with the cost of food, gas, everything going up. Quit taxing us anymore. You know, if the city would spend their money wisely over all these years, I think there'd be a big enough cushion so that we, the people, aren't continuing to be taxed all the time, especially in a time like this. You know, lower the air conditioner, you know? Don't buy as many things, get rid of positions maybe that aren't needed instead of continuing to tax the people. That would be appreciated. It's not a good time to keep taxing us. And that's what I have to say about that issue for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody further at this time? All right. Closing the first call to the public, there will be a second call to the public. Our first is a public hearing and presentation. We have a presentation of the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award, recognizing Glenn Jones for outstanding contributions to our organization, and we want to celebrate him at this time. Glenn, I'll meet you right over here.
You have as much time as you want. Because this is all about you. So I want to share with you the nomination that was received. So we have this amazing program at the Town of Florence. Where? We have an employee incentives committee. And any employee, anybody can nominate an employee within the Town of Florence. And they submit their reasoning why to the committee. And this committee of employees comes together. They review all of the submissions that have been received, and then they pick a winner. And today, sir, you are our winner. You are our Employee of the Month that we are here to celebrate. The Police Department, I believe, is a representation of the town. And in conversation with Glenn, I mentioned how I needed to come in and do some work in the department. The next morning, I found out that Glenn had come over and completed the work that I had mentioned to him. And when I asked why, he said, "You're right, Chief. This is the face of the department, and I simply wanted to help you in a small way." Glenn took on the additional responsibilities as the Police Chaplain. And this is a volunteer position, and it calls for response at a moment's notice, 24/7. Glenn has gone out on at least 10 calls for service where someone has passed away to provide comfort for those in need. Never a complaint. When he's up at 2:00 in the morning assisting loved ones and then having to turn around and report to work at 4:00 in the morning, the response I get about Glenn is universal in these aspects. Chief, I am so thankful that Chaplain Jones was here. He listened. He provided comfort, and he helped assist me in making final arrangements. And I don't know what I would have done without him. His helping hands extend beyond the Police Department. Glenn is a quiet lead in making the Town of Florence food distribution happen monthly. Without fail, he sets up the distribution lines, all of the tables, the traffic cones, the pallets, and all of the other necessities that make it possible to service approximately 80 families without food. Glenn has also been known to take the food items to members of our community that are shut in and cannot make it to the distribution site. Willing to sacrifice. I called Glenn on the phone, and I told him about the lights not working around the Police Department and how our dispatchers were concerned about having to leave at night in the parking lot. I noticed at the time his voice sounded kind of muffled, but did not pay much attention until he had arrived. Glenn was covered in what looked like dust from head to toe, and I inquired, "What happened?" Glenn told me he was up in the attic somewhere working on a maintenance issue. I told him that this issue could have waited, and his response was, "No, it can't. I don't want anyone feeling unsafe." Glenn surveyed the area, and the next morning, all of our lights were working. There should be no doubt. Glenn's service to this town is unprecedented and unselfish. You do not see him without a smile or well wishes for anyone in his path. And he loves the Town of Florence and the community, and it shows every day in his work and his volunteerism. We are here to award him today with the Employee of the Month, and I would also like to have you say a few words before we give you an astounding round of applause.
Thank you, Mayor Walters. I was asking how much time I had because I didn't see the clock moving. You know, as a chaplain, as a pastor, we can talk a long time. So I was hoping I would see that clock. You know, it's easy to talk about someone else, but it's very hard for me to talk about myself. And if Mayor Walter hadn't been saying my name, I wouldn't know who she was talking about. You know, I'm very humble. And one thing that my mom taught me, said I wasn't going to cry because I already did that. I had to regroup. She said, "Always do your best in everything that you do. And when you feel that you've done your best, keep doing." And she said, "Never give up, because when you give up, that's when you feel that you failed." And she said, "Even at that point, you get back up. And if someone criticizes you for doing your best," she said, "it's because they're trying to get to where you are." Another thing is that I thank you, Mayor Walters, for this opportunity. I think each and every one of you, Chris, for allowing me to be a part of the team. And that's what I want to say briefly. You know, when I got hired for the Town of Florence, it meant a lot to me because those of you, Tom, I know you know, who knew my mom, she dedicated her life to the Town of Florence Public Library. And so when I started working for the town, that was one of the positions that I was put in to take care of the library. So it had a very sentimental value to me, and I did my best, my very best, because she left a legacy with the Town of Florence Library. And so another thing about it is, like I said, I don't want to talk about me because there are some other people that even though my name is the one that's been recognized, I'm a team player. There are some people that should be up here other than myself. And there's two ladies that accepted me in in the Custodial Department when I got hired. I got hired, they accepted me with open arms, but I almost gave up the first month that I was working for the Town of Florence. And I'm going to tell you why. Because they found out I was a little jumpy. And so they figured that they come up with this brilliant idea of doing scare tactics on me. And so let alone that they know they were actually helping me out. So I very seldom am not here at work. And this is the reason why. I don't miss days when I work here because I don't know what they had planned when I came in the next day. They would always have things set up for me. They would jump off behind walls. They are the reason why I'm the employee that I am. That's why I'm always on time because I don't know what's coming. And they are very, very dedicated workers. And when I saw that, I said, "I'm not going to let these ladies outshine me." That's what I said. So all accolades go to them, even though I'm the one that's up here getting recognized. Chris, and to Tom in his absence, distance for the team.
Give him a round of applause.
Item number two is a public hearing on ordinance number 714-22, and a first read of ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, levying the assessed evaluation of the property within the Town of Florence subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June, 2023. Ms. Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Tonight, we have our open public hearing on our property tax levy. Our property tax levy is part of our budget process. So we have a proposed rate of $1.74 on $100 net assessed valuation to raise a proposed property tax.
Becky, I hate to interrupt you, but it's really hard to hear, especially in the back. Would you mind moving the mic a little?
Sure. Of $1,386,500. This is a 2.65% increase in property tax levy. And that would be an increase of $2.77 on a $100,000 home. So right now, our current rate is at $1,466. So in looking at this, you can see where our current property tax levy itself on our property values is additional is $34,271. On the new construction component of $5,356,586, it yields $57,546. So both factors represent an increase of $91,817 in property tax revenue. Our property tax revenue is about 6% of the general fund budget, which funds our police, fire, administrative departments, community services, and community development departments. So this is a public hearing. It's required as a truth and taxation hearing because it's levied higher than the prior year. So on a $100,000 home, it would be $107.43 in comparison to $104.66, which is, if you have a $300,000 home, it's less than $10 total overall levy. Just to give you a little comparison. Each person's property values have to be calculated separately. So that is our proposed property tax levy for this year.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions, comments, before I open up the public hearing? At this time, we are opening up the public hearing. Is there anybody either in the audience or online that has any questions or comments? Can we please unmute Ms. Har?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor. So my question is to Ms. Jimenez. So overall, I know you're saying $107.43 is what it would be on a $100,000 home, and it's currently $104.60 now on a home. So I think it was $2.77 increase is what you indicated. So what is that in general? If we raise that $2.77 on a $100,000 home, how much are we looking at total for all the homes that are in Florence, Arizona? What is that dollar amount going to look like? Question, that's my question.
Again, it is $34,271 over last year's levy, plus on the new construction component, for an overall levy of those two combined of $91,817 in property tax revenue.
I guess my question to council would be, do we really need that $91,817? Can we not find money somewhere else? I agree with what Ms. Ramirez had indicated is that we are being taxed to death, and wages are not going up. And once again, $2.77 might not be a much to some people, but it's a lot to others, especially when you're looking at $107.43. Overall, it's a lot of money when you can find everything. I think Ms. Ramirez said it's $733, now more a month for Arizonans. So I think council needs to take a look at that, and can we maybe table that and look at it another time? Thank you.
Thank you. And I cannot speak to the number that Ms. Ramirez had quoted. I will say that I've seen numerous news stories that, yes, there is absolutely no doubt that an increase has occurred and that many of us are feeling the impact of that. I've heard ranges, so I don't want to say anything on the lower end or the higher end because I don't know that definitive answer.
I do want to remind council that the Town of Florence has one of the lowest property tax rates in the whole county.
We do. We definitely do have one of the lowest property tax rates in Penal County. And we have also been talking about as a council and as a community, we have heard, you know, the want and the desire for increased public safety, increased services. And, you know, it's time for us to make a decision once this item is before us of the direction that we're going.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I speak? We do have in our budget that we are trying to give our employees a raise this year. So we're trying our best to be competitive. We know that we are very underpaid for the other towns in our area. So we're doing our best to try to spend our money wisely.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, we did not build any merit increases into our budget this year because of our expenditure limit. We're working on a study right now, a comparative study, but we did not build anything in for our employees. They're at a standstill as far as what's been increased over last year and this year as far as their positions and their ranges.
But we did give them, what, $2,500 bonus?
A stipend. We gave a stipend.
Yeah, well, that's... That had to be paid somewhere.
Yes, we had to find budget, and we did have excess budget left over for this year to be able to afford to pay that stipend.
Yes, thank you.
I want to remind council that this is a public hearing and that the levy itself will not take place until July 5th.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments before I close this public hearing? Ms. Ramirez, go ahead.
Hello again. So I understand that our budget's around $60 million. And again, I'm not even going to pretend I even understand the budget. And there's $30 million locked up somewhere. So really, our budget's about 30. Our budget's about the same as what it is in Gilbert, Arizona, I think. So I've heard, and I've seen stuff in the past, but I don't know where we are with that. I understand Penal County is actually going to do a decrease in the Penal County residents' tax, property taxes. I just saw that last week. Something to look into. But again, we're getting taxed like crazy, you know? And all of you up on the council, you know, voted for the recent sewer raise. And now we're being, you know, we've got this with our property taxes. The economy's not going to get any better. And our people are suffering, right? Us at home... Us at home that, you know, can't afford to, you know, have our AC so cool. We don't have taxpayers, you know, paying our AC. We can't, you know, ask our supervisors for a raise because we can't afford to pay our, you know, property taxes or power bills or whatever's going up by, you know, the powers that be that keep raising everything. And so, here's our council asking the people for, you know, more. This is two, two increases in just, you know, two, two months this year, I think. So, just something to consider. Budget the money a little bit better. You know, we work really hard for our money. And if there's, you know, there's $60 million in the budget, you know, are you guys really going to hurt if you're, you know, missing out on 90,000, you know, from us as a whole community? Just take that into consideration. Every little bit, you know, matters to the people that are already struggling in this economy. So, just think about that before you come to the people wanting more money all the time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir, come forward.
Mayor, council members, my name is Mick McLaughlin. I live in Sun City. Many of you do too, I know. I'm here just to ask a question. There are a lot of people who are in our neighborhood who are asking about this increase that's supposed to happen. And a lot of comments are, well, look at all the houses they're building here. They're going to get taxes from all of those houses, and it's almost never-ending. And I guess I'm wondering, have that, has that been factored into what you're talking about, your needs? The number of houses, the brand-new builds, how those contributions of taxes will cover what the needs are here? I don't know that there's too much more staff that you'll need because of the houses, although that might be. This is more of a question. So, I'm looking for some rationale as far as we're concerned. And I suspect you probably realize, given that I said most of you live over there, that most of the people in Florence probably come from Sun City or Parkside. And I guess I'm just looking to see how those tax monies would factor into your needs.
I appreciate that, thank you. Ms. Jimenez, would you like to field that, or would you like me to field that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, as Ms. Jimenez referenced earlier in the report, there was the consideration that has been forecasted regarding the building that is occurring all over Florence, Arizona, and how that is going to impact the revenues received. And please interrupt me if I say anything incorrect. I will not be offended. So, in looking at that, we also factor in all of the growth that has to occur because within the town of Florence, we provide many services. We have community services ranging from the library to the senior center to the programmings at the schools that we assist with. Our police and our fire are the largest expenditure within our town of Florence budget, and that directly impacts the safety and the service delivery to our citizens. So, as the continued growth continues to move in, we want to make sure that we are preparing and planning for that staffing that will need to occur so we can prepare for those positions. We're in a time where there's, as Councilmember Anderson had commented earlier, there are surrounding agencies that continuously take our amazing employees from the town of Florence because of what they offer competitively in their fields. So, we bring them into the town of Florence. We train them, we invest in them, and then, because we cannot keep up competitively, unfortunately, some do make a choice to leave. We are forecasting and planning on being able to retain those quality employees in the town of Florence while we continue to provide the services, plan for the roads, and everything else that comes with the amenities in living in the town of Florence. Does that answer your question, sir?
Not quite.
Okay. Ms. Garcia, could you elaborate a little bit more? Because I glossed over it, and I know that you're ready to go in-depth.
Because it's a budgetary question where he's asking how the new construction will perform and what it will do, I will defer to the Finance Director.
Okay. Whenever you have a community like we do, a growing community, we have a variety of things that we have. That's okay. I can, I can almost eat this mic, it's all right. Because we're a growing community, like Mayor said, our, one of our major areas is police and fire. Those are the kind of things that we look at when we have growing communities. It's not just in the Anthem area, but it's in the total of Florence right now. So, we're trying to gear up and prepare for what is to come in the future. It costs a lot of money to continue on with the operations and maintenance, especially now in our economy where we're having supply shortages, staffing shortages, and things like that. It just requires funding. We can't stay at a one level of service all the time with just a little amount of money. We have to continuously increase. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sir, could you restate your question to me? I... Go ahead because I have a little bit of confusion here.
Like I said, this is a question because I can't understand the need for more money right now considering that there are so many homes being built, particularly, of course, in Sun, in Merrill Ranch area, okay? And I hear you say that you need the money now. I happen to be a volunteer of 45 volunteers to the police department. And we've never had those volunteers before. We're trying to take some of the burden off of the active police people and giving them the chance to police. So, there are ways to kind of reduce the needs without increasing the cost. As far as I'm concerned, probably is not that much, and I'm grateful that you guys have done a good job so far. But I don't understand for those people who are complaining to me, I'm the former Vice President of the HOA, people who are still complaining to me about an increase in the, in the taxes. So, what I'm asking for is some rationale on why it needs to be done now before you get all of that money from all of those houses that are being built. It's that simple.
You do have a delay in revenues from whenever you build homes. They get on the tax roll at least a year later than when they're actually occupied. So, we, as a, in budgetary process, we go ahead and levy on the assessed values that we have at hand now. There may come a time in the future where it's not required to levy so much money. You have to remember right now that the town itself is reliant on state shared revenues by 55%. That means 55% of our general fund revenue is generated from the state of Arizona. We do not have a large sales tax base, and most communities have that large sales tax base to supplement and to actually be the greater revenue source. We don't. So, we have to rely on different pots of money in our general fund to support the ongoing needs of the general fund that are not reducing, they're increasing. I applaud the fact that we have volunteer groups, but you have to look at what it actually costs for a police officer or a fire, firefighter, battalion chief, engineer, battalion chiefs, sergeants in the police department to come on board. They, they are not inexpensive. It costs a lot of money. And given with that, as we're growing, we have to have a lot of staff. Not a lot. We have to have adequate staff in order to support all of the different functions of the general fund itself, which comes with administration. That is why.
Ms. Bucelado, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm just wondering if this is something that can be tabled until we see if 459 passes possibly? And maybe if those funds can be utilized for this instead of taxing the people anymore? If it's maybe something that we can just put off for six months to see if that actually passes, and maybe we can incur some of that from there?
No, you cannot do that. Your tax levy has to be made this month, in July. You have two weeks after you adopt your budget to adopt your tax levy. Or it doesn't get done, we'll lose that much money.
So, I would like to just say a few words. So, this is all part of the Truth in Taxation public hearing that is required. So, it is required for the town of Florence to open up, to advertise, to open up, to advertise, and to hear from the public. And it's, it's a great thing that allows for our citizens to be able to be heard in the process. So, tonight, that's what we're doing. We're doing a Truth in Taxation public hearing where all citizens have the right to be heard. Council can digest this information. And then, in two weeks, you come back, and Council determines whether they want to move forward or whether they don't want to move forward. Also, when we were talking at the very beginning, there were various rates that could have been adopted. And so, that is also part of that public hearing notice. So, we just want to make sure that the public is aware that their voice being heard is exactly what we want. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything as transparent as possible.
Thank you guys for responding to that. I appreciate you.
With that being said, a lot of people have got stipends. A lot of people have got bonuses, but not all. And as it was said earlier, there are already 80 families in town alone that need to get food boxes. There's a lot of people asking for help in the chat sites. And maybe this can just be tabled if possible, or the money can be found somewhere else temporarily. We know there's going to be a rate hike one day. We are growing, things go up. But just maybe the timing is a little bit off right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Jimenez, can you also just, you've done this before in one of our priors, and I apologize because I didn't ask ahead of time for you to bring this information, so I don't know if you have it. But in prior years, could you also just provide a review of what Council has done regarding taxes?
Would you like to see a history of the tax levy itself?
Yeah, we, you showed it before to us.
Yes.
So, I didn't know if you brought that tonight or if you had that information.
Let's see. Carl might have gotten it.
Thank you so much. We can pause for a moment. We can take a five minute while he grabs it. Ms. Barriola's hand was up first.
I feel forced to, I can't stand it. I have to come up and say this. In my work in the past in planning and urban development and in economic development, I have learned that statistics show that residential does not pay for all of the essential things needed to operate government. So, you have to have, as Becky said, you have to have that commercial and industrial to make up the deficit. And Florence unfortunately has not, does not have that much commercial and industrial to take up that extra deficit. So, hopefully, with the increased population, that will increase the businesses out there in industrial. So, you won't have to, you can stop raising the residential. Did that make sense?
That made sense, and you know, commercial has always been our goal, and we have been actively working towards that. As a matter of fact, last, this past fiscal year, we invested $250,000 in our Main Street to assist our businesses in being able to bring up to code, bring businesses into the building, as well as our town has welcomed many new businesses into the town of Florence in various areas within our community.
I'm not arguing, but I know that. But that is, is the reason you need more, more businesses. That's, that's why, and that's what Becky said, is you need more industry and businesses.
Absolutely. So, we are open for business, and we are ready for businesses to come. And we're actively working with businesses. And I just want to thank Mr. Kraus for being here this evening. Again, he is our new economic developer, director that is here this evening. And Carl, thank you so much for getting those facts and figures.
Okay. And last year, we levied a rate of $1.6. In 2021, $1.585. So, there was a very minor increase. In 2020, $1.740. In 2019, $1.16. So, our rates dropped. In 2018, $1.1345. So, it dropped again in 2019. In 2017, it was $1.11. I don't have the rate for 2016, but in 2015, it was $1.182. And in 2014, $1.182. So, as you can see, our rate has not been increased. It's actually dropped down over the years. It has, it's just a tad of an increase over last, it's just a tad of a, a rate increase over last year. But it's the levy, not the rate, that determines what the levy is going to be.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, just for informational purposes, this is a process that is revisited every year, and it's open to public for comment, for input, and we work together on this.
Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson, proceed.
I'd like to just remind everybody, you know, our neighbor Coolidge, for example, they have much higher sales tax revenue because of Walmart and because of the auto businesses that they have there. We don't have those kind of sales tax revenue. Our sales tax is primarily from the Safeway store. And, you know, so we don't get a lot of sales tax. So, you know, our revenue sources are very limited. And we talked about $90,000 is what this is going to get us as an increase year. How much did the new fire truck cost us?
$735,000.
Okay. Didn't quite cover it, did we? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, did you want to speak?
Okay. So, you know, again, with a $60 million budget, I, I think that if the people, most normal people don't even understand the budget, right? I glanced at it and actually called and talked to Ms. Jimenez this morning, you know, with a couple of questions because I don't understand it. But what caught my attention was some of the stuff that was on there that showed the proposed, what we actually got, and then what's, I'm sorry, the 22 proposal for funds. What, I can't remember what it's called, but it's in three columns. So, what they were expecting in 2022, what we actually got, and then what's proposed for 23. So, some of the stuff that was proposed for 22, Florence actually got tens of thousands of dollars, you know, way more in many of those categories that were even on the budget. And maybe if you guys can pull that up even and maybe explain some of that stuff to the people to see how we actually benefited from what we, what was proposed. Does that make sense, Becky? I mean...
Well, we, we actually did. We did do that at a work session, and I believe that is still accessible.
Oh, it's posted on our website in detail.
So, there was a work session regarding the budget. We've actually had many, and it's filmed, and you can watch it anytime you'd like.
Okay. Well, we're, we're here tonight talking about it, so...
But it's good to be able to also watch it or to actually attend to the meetings when they occur so that way you could interact and engage. So, when the numbers are projected up on the board, because unfortunately, this evening, we don't have those numbers up and projected on the board.
Are there future meetings for that? Or is it, are we still... Or is it, are we still talking the four, four, five, nine? Is that what you're talking about?
Ms. Garcia, can you explain what our budget process is when we're planning for the upcoming year?
So tonight, council actually adopts that budget. And the reason why that we're here having your TNT public hearing is because the requirement to either adopt a property tax or not adopt a property tax happens within two weeks of the adoption of the budget. And that's actually happened by state statute. And so, once we're through that process, Finance Director has a limited amount of time to get our numbers over to the county and make sure that we file all of our documentation. So in the town's adopted budget tonight, or the town's adopted budget calendar, tonight is the day that, under new business, you'll enter into a special meeting. You'll have a public hearing on your proposed budget, or, hold on, I'm getting myself confused. We'll have a public hearing, and then we will adjourn into a special meeting because budgets are required to be adopted by special meeting. And tonight, council will be asked to adopt the budget. We're at the end of our process for adoption of the budget. The staff does begin working and working with the council and the other departments about October of the fiscal year, so we'll have those numbers begin, we'll go through, and we will do work sessions between March, April. May is when your final budget will come to the floor, where council and the public have the ability to discuss what is being proposed. And of course, we always want to hear from our public on the budgets that are being proposed. And then after we go through those public hearings, then the Finance Department actually preps the final documents and their schedules. They advertise the final documents and the schedules, and we come to the council for adoption. Did I miss anything?
No. I do want to be clear on, just for general knowledge for the public, the budget is a very complicated document. Some of the revenues that I discussed with Ms. Ramirez this afternoon or this morning were development impact fees. Those are not general fund monies. Every little fund or business in the town that we have, which is probably, what, 40, 40 businesses, have their own revenue sources, they have their own expenditures, they have their own cash accounts. They're all separate, and they're, some of them are for very specific funds that cannot be spent for anything else. So I want to be clear that the general fund is normally what we're talking about when we're talking about a property tax levy. That is the only location that those monies are spent in, is in our general fund. The development impact fees cannot be spent for anything except what's in our development impact fee study. They're restricted funds for purposes of new development only. We have a lot of different funds that have, like I said, have special purposes. So in our budget document itself, in each of the pages, it tells you exactly what those funds are for. So if you want to look at the budget and to understand it, you have to go through the 200, and I think it's 71 pages of budget, so that you fully understand it.
And you can't expect the public to understand that, Mayor.
I'm not asking the public to understand that, but I am just saying that...
Well, your comment made it seem as if, if we just go to the meeting, we'd, it's complicated.
My apologies if it came off that way. That is not how it was intended. It was just, I'm trying very hard to communicate that we want public input and public participation. That's something that I have continuously communicated along with my colleagues up here right now. We have said this over the years, many years. When we have the meetings, they're always advertised. I'm just simply trying to say where you can find this information, and believe me, it's very detailed of what you're looking for, as well as you can find the, I call it the glossed over version. So we go in deep at our meetings, but we also have what I call that glossed version that gives you what you had observed, where it says, this is what we're anticipating, this is our actual, this is our forecasted for the upcoming year. And we go through that for every department and every service that is provided within the Town of Florence. So and part of our surveys are indicative of citizens that want to see the services continue, services increase. I have yet to hear from a citizen that says, we want to decrease in this service, or that that service is not valued. So in an effort to keep up and to forecast and to prepare, because we do need to prepare to continue providing those services to our citizens.
Yes, I agree, and I think that we also understand, you know, just like normal families, we budget our money, right? If we're not, you know, we budget it. If we don't make that, you know, we don't get Starbucks for the month, we, you know, right? We budget it, and we expect our cities to do that, too. And again, like $60 million budget, there's 30 million somewhere in some account, you know, again, I don't know how it works, but with $60 million budget, like again, you know, is the city really going to hurt if they don't tax the people again for, you know, raising property taxes? I don't, just something to think about. A lot of people are hurting right now in Florence, Arizona. Okay? So thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome, we appreciate it. Did I miss somebody over here? I want to say somebody raised their hand over here, and then I know Sheri is also online. Back row, did somebody in the back row raise their hand? Okay. I apologize, but I thought I saw. All right, Ms. Har, hang on one moment, and we'll unmute you. You are unmuted.
Thank you. So I want to, I have several questions. How many police are we looking at hiring? How many fire people are we looking at hiring? What is the current vacancy currently at now? Have we conducted a study as to why people are currently leaving the police department and also the fire department? Are they doing exit interviews? If they are doing them, they have a third party doing them? I know that we talked about commercial and industrial making money. I know we have a lot of private prisons here, and I know that the Town of Florence makes money from private prisons being here as well. How are we utilizing those monies? Also, what was another question I had was, so if we're hiring people, for example, I'm just going to do a police officer, we hire a police officer who is not post-certified, and we pay for them to go get post-certified. Is there any way legally we can have them sign a contract that they stay with us for one year or two years after they've received their post certification that we paid for, the Town of Florence has paid for, we the people? So that's a question, I guess, for legal. Can we do something like that? Those are my questions.
So those are a lot of questions, and I apologize because I was listening, because I was not anticipating that amount of questions coming in. Usually I will take notes. Vice Mayor, did you take notes?
Yes, she, the first one was, how many police officers?
Would you like to address?
Oh, I'll give that, questions.
Okay.
And some of them I can probably answer, quite a few of them I probably can't. First one was, how many police officers and firefighters are we looking at hiring? So I think that would go...
For this next fiscal year, we're hiring one firefighter.
Okay, the next one was, I think she asked what their current pay rate was.
How about police?
We are not hiring any police officers. We could not fit them into the budget right now. Our chief will tell us when it's time to hire. We depend on our department directors to tell us when they need staff.
And I would assume that would be not, not including current vacancies. So we're not adding a position. So if we have 10 positions, we're not adding an 11th position.
Well, I would like, this is, this is Lisa, I'd like to go on the record to state that during the budget process this year, it was a very different budget process for both the council...
Do we know what our, with the police and the fire?
Hang on one moment, Ms. Garcia is giving an explanation.
So this was a very different year for the Town of Florence, in such a way that, based on our permanent base adjustment, this year, we went back in and we calculated our permanent base adjustment. And then even though that there would have been requests from our team to be able to have needs be met, the Town of Florence was not in a position to where we could entertain those needs. So even in the fire department, where we looked at the new position, it's not actually just adding a new position, it's incorporating monies that were already in their budget and changing how they're spent. Our key focus this year was making sure that we are underneath our expenditure limitation. And that is vital, because if we're not under our expenditure limitation, then the result is, is a loss of state shared revenues for first, future years, and it can push us back even further. It's depending on how much over your state imposed expenditure limitation that a community spends on, on how they are, how that, how that is imposed. So this fiscal year, when we looked at it, we very much looked at what our revenue is underneath our expenditure limitation, and, and we did not go and fill a wants budget. We went in and we made sure that we were presenting to council, which we would, should be discussing in the next item, budgeting, because that's, that's coming up. But it's very much to make sure that our budget needs match our expenditure limitation. Fair, Becky?
Yes.
And so that those questions about officers and how many positions that we are going to fill, and what we need to do is that until we have a higher expenditure limitation, we're not able to add additional staff to those positions at this time.
So again, it goes back to the planning and preparing for the future as we continue to grow.
May I ask another question?
Oh, hang on, Vice Mayor?
And then I, one of her questions was also, the amount of money that the Town of Florence makes off of the private prisons, not the public prisons, which we all know we've lost money on the public prison. So how much is the Town of Florence making on private prisons?
So the Town of Florence receives state shared revenues based on the population that is incarcerated at the time, as if they are residents. We do not have a separate contract that somebody would say makes money on. We get money as if they are citizens of the Town of Florence. We do provide police, we do provide provider support to those agencies. So I'm not understanding the question, but I believe the answer is that we do receive state shared revenue based on our population number, and inmates are considered being housed in special places, and the special places do count as your population count.
I would add to that.
So that would be under our census?
I would add to that, that that state shared revenue, when it's dealing with prisons, the contract is between the state of Arizona with the private prison, it is not with the Town of Florence and the private prison. So that is why it's part of our state shared revenue versus us having a separate contract with them. So if we lose 3,000 inmates, it doesn't matter if they're in a private prison or a public prison, we lost 3,000 residents, because that's how we are paid by the state, based on the inmate regardless of where they are housed.
Okay, and then, am I, can I, then my next question was, have we conducted, I know that they indicated that we can't keep staff here, and have we conducted a study as to why people are leaving? You know, have they done exit interviews? And I mean with exit interviews, like you have a third party entity doing it, so they feel that they can be honest as to why they're moving.
That's not part of the taxation question, but I will say that the Town of Florence is always looking at the reasons why, and we continue to look at it, and as it is personnel related, it is not subject to the floor.
Okay, so the $97,000 that we're looking at and the increase would not be utilized for police or fire as presented? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
I, I think it's important to, to remember that, as Ms. Ramirez has stated, you know, she looked at our budget and that we received more money than what we thought we were going to get. Quite a bit of that extra came from COVID relief. It was not all generated, and it was because the government itself gave the government more money. But we also need to remember, not only are gas prices increasing to an astronomical rate, my ga, you know, my gas bill for my house increased, my electrical bill for my house increased, my groceries are more expensive. Everything is more expensive. And don't forget that we all voted as a state to increase minimum wage, and that's moving on a scale as well. So as our officers, our firefighters, our directors, our maintenance, our janitors, whoever it is in this town, we are already behind on salaries compared to the town next to us. Queen Creek went and opened up their own police department, and so now the county no longer is their main source for, for that service. And they are out there looking for the best officers they can find. So it, it is frustrating for us, because yes, we do pay to train these officers, we do pay to train these firefighters, as you should. If you want a good firefighter and you want a good officer, you better be ready to invest in their future and show them that you want them here. But these other towns are stealing them from us because they can pay them a higher rate. So if we want to increase our police department, to increase all those homes in Anthem, or Anthem is not the only place building, we are building like crazy out here in Florence, too. So it's not just Anthem. If we want to be able to provide a solid service for those people, we have to understand that things are going to have to raise. I am not a supporter of taxing people. Becky knows that. I am always like, nope, 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 nope. And I will actually go and check the record to see if I even voted yes on the sewer tax rate, because normally I vote no on taxation. But at some point, even I have to say, it, it's a necessity to growth. And if we want to continue to grow, we have to understand that with that comes some expenses. And we also have to understand that commercial needs to come here, and we've got to be ready for that. But commercial even in itself will not be a supporter of the town. We still are going to have to pay taxes.
I do want to...
I understand that, I do understand. Can I, is okay if I go again?
Hang on one moment, can you just mute her? And I'm just going to have Ms. Becky Jimenez speak what she was going to speak, and then I'll unmute you again.
Just for a point of clarification, we did not include, increase our wastewater or sewer rate at all. We increased our sanitation rate by a dollar. That's, that's what we increased, and that was because we got an increase from the provider in that amount.
And then, and then I want to make one more statement, is that sewer rates are based on studies that are done because they are enterprise funds, and the fee has to match the costs. And so they're very different, they're not taxes. And as, as Finance Director Jimenez stated, the last time that we raised rates, it was sanitation or garbage based on what we were being charged.
Because what we're being charged has to be exactly offset on what is collected.
Right, the enterprise funds have to support themselves, or else find another revenue source to support it. And at this point, we have no other source other than themselves. So the rates and fees are set on the cost of the systems themselves, which includes operation and maintenance, debt service, and capital outlay.
Except for in the area north of the Gila, where our residents are serviced by Epcor, and we do not control that rate. But we do advocate when available and when we can, in front of the commission, to support not increasing. All right, if you would go ahead and unmute her, I believe she had one more question, and then, yes, sir. I'm going to have Ms. Har ask her last question, and then I'm going to have you come to the podium.
I want to say thank you, that I think you can see that there's several of us that are getting more active, and we want to know answers, and we're inquisitive. And I think that's our right, you know, as community members to ask these questions. I do recall, Vice Mayor, you did vote yes on that sanitation rate. I think all of you voted yes on the sanitation rate. But again, I just want, I think you see that Ms. Ramirez is here, you see Bonnie's here, and then the gentleman, he's here. I know that there's other people that are on the call as well. And this is what we, we want to understand, and that's why we're trying to work with you so that we can get a better understanding. So again, I appreciate you, everyone, for your time. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's what we're all here for, is to share information, to talk, and to work together. Mike, come on up. How are you this evening?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
It's good to see you.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I've lived here since September '08, and I know in the budget, there have to be funds for road repair. And my concern is, what is the way that is handled? How do you set priorities on what road needs to be looked at and fixed? And also, I'm assuming there is a relationship with the state of Arizona. There are funds probably available for use to do those kinds of things, because I can give you two examples. One is Arizona Farms and Hunt Highway. If you're coming back towards town, and there's someone who wants to make a left-hand turn there, you could sit there in your car for 10 minutes until you can go forward. That's one example. Another example is, we use Ataway frequently because there are limited ways to go in and out of Florence. And at the corner of 87 and Ataway, just past where the cement place is, that road is horrible. And how do you prioritize, or how do you determine the use of funds to fix those kinds of things? I'm sure you have a transportation or road construction department headed up by somebody who makes decisions, and that's something that concerns me in the long time that I've been here. There has to be some state funds available that can be acquired to do things like that, because that's a state road right there at that light by the cement factory. That's only a question, and-
No, I love that question, and I actually like the examples you gave because, and Chris, correct me if I am wrong, but Arizona Farms and Hunt Highway, so that's in the county. And we have communicated several times at different meetings and different levels with the county, on behalf of our citizens and our community, that that is an issue that needs to be resolved. We continue to revisit what their five-year plan looks like and what they need to do to fix it. Unfortunately, that's outside of the municipal boundaries where we can expend taxpayer money to fix the roads, as well as Ataway, the corner of 87 and Ataway, that's actually Coolidge. So that's not, and I, I like the examples that you gave, because if you look at the areas of the roads, I want to give kudos to Chris Ellis and his crew, because he's continuously bringing projects before council. You might be our biggest spender minus police and fire in regards to projects, because he is always looking at repairs that need to be made proactively, coming before council and saying, okay, if we apply this HVAC sealant, I know I said that wrong, but you'll correct me, and that's okay. The sealant and the preservation, the pavement preservation, and so we always have projects. And Chris, can you just speak a little bit, because I, I want to give you that opportunity?
So-
I've heard all kinds of things of the state's going to provide some more ways of getting in and out of Florence, and if we're going to, with this gentleman's expertise, develop some commercial business, we have to have ways for people to come in and out and use the services and, you know, spend money.
Wholeheartedly agree.
So can you give us some sort of a email synopsis of what the state is planning for 40, for 87, for 287, for 10, so that we can, you know, lift our spirits a little bit that there is something coming our way?
Yes, I'm going to have Chris take it, because he is the guru for all things transportation in and around Florence.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's okay. Thank you. If you wanted to stay there, if you had another question, I don't mind. Go ahead, Chris.
So to address the first question or comment, the town does not, does not utilize an expensive, like, profilometer. That's something that you would see the Department of ADOT use, MEC dot use. There are plenty of, by your own eye, infield evaluations. We utilize two to rank all of our streets from highest to lowest. But ours is a little bit more sophisticated than even that. In an effort to always be fair, we try to apply so many projects to the downtown because of the tax base, and so many projects to Anthem, and so many projects to Florence Gardens. So if you look at historically, we've tried to spend money for each one of those each years. But at the same time, I believe we have completed all of our HA5 projects in Florence Gardens. So there's going to be a slight lull until, well, those projects need another application. Where in Anthem, every so many months, a new unit is being completed. And so as the mayor was saying, we utilize a product called HA5, which reduces oxidation of the, of the railways and reduces cracking of it. So we have that application over there. In, in downtown, the roads are in different conditions, and so you can't utilize that type of product there. It's needing a structural change. So we're doing chip seals, or a version of a chip seal, polymer modified chip seal there. So I, I think for a community our size, we have a highly sophisticated program on how we're doing it. And I would be glad to have you, myself, and Dan Cisco sit down anytime and go over more specifics. But we, we do have that available. As far as like the regional, believe it or not, we actually had a meeting today with ADOT to discuss things like 287 and 79. This is a complete coincidence, but we did have that meeting today, and we will, and so the, the emphasis of that meeting was to open up communication to more, what I am used to, working with the Tucson southwest, I, I can't remember, they've changed the name three times since my career started there. So the Tucson District, let's just call it that. We want to have a relationship with the Tucson District and get an understanding. So we're talking about improvements along Desert Ridge, we're talking about improvements along Western Crossings, we're having conversations about what is referred to as Lewis Farms. Each one of these is going to have an impact on 287, and so Harvey and I are making sure that ADA and us are on the same page as far as requiring our traffic impact analysis, the standards that are utilized in that, capacity improvements, future traffic signals. So once again, we are looking at that, and, and this is the beginning of probably more meetings and more coordination, but we're having the same conversations about 79. And we will continue to advocate for areas like the 87 and Ataway intersection, even though they're not necessarily a town, we're going to continue to bring that up too, obviously ADOT, that intersection. We can continue to bring it up to Pinau County and their area that you were describing, as well as the area that is Coolidge between those. But there's a significant gap between where ours, our road ends at Palmer, I believe. And so between that and 287, there's some significant distance in there. But like I said, I invite you to come down by the office, we're over here on Ruggles.
It'd be nice if you could give us a summary of your activities so that you can whet our appetite that there is something in the future.
I can work with our, with our PIO and Town Manager on figuring out a format.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chappelle. And yes, we will get that information out there. All right, is there, I see Bonnie Rogers? Oh, wait, actually, Councilmember Rodriguez, you've been waiting patiently, I apologize.
Yeah, I've, I've got some things all loaded here I've been wanting to say, so I apologize that this is sort of sporadic at this point. But first of all, I want to thank the gentleman who volunteers with our police department. I really wanted to express that we value our volunteers, any volunteer, any volunteer that spends their time in our community, giving back to the people that are serving. I, I really do appreciate it. It takes a lot of effort on your, on your end, and I really do value your time. When overall, looking at the budget though, we can't always rely on volunteers. Volunteers may come and go, and certain opportunities might be part of their appetite for that moment, but then, you know, seasons of life make them drift off. So it is important that we are always, I guess, sorry, I'm struggling with my words today, it's been all day. But that we always make sure that we have a solid base of employees, and of course, not making sure that we don't, like, overexpend in our employees. I guess I wanted to talk more about, like, Courtney, if I may, sort of build on some of your comments, saying about pay not keeping up, to be able to pay for the taxation, and that's the same issue we're dealing with. I think this has sort of been beaten over the head by now, but we also need to make sure our employees are taken care of so that their pay is comparable. We've talked about that numerous times. Also, you related it to a family's budget. And I think that, when I thought about that, I love relating things to families, because I have six kids, and family is very important to me. So when I think about that, I think about, if you're a new couple and you're pregnant for the first time, that's sort of the stage that Florence is in. You know what's coming, you know somewhat to expect, but you have to plan ahead, and it's going to be a lot of budget, a lot of budgetary expenses and changes and things that are going to come ahead, and you can only know so much. You know, and if you can't, you can rely on your volunteers, your people who are going to gift you things like your time to be able to sort of free up resources, and that's great, but you can't rely on that to be a long-term solution. So I think it's important for people in the public to understand that we are in this period of growth, which is fantastic, but there is other steps that we have to take to be able to, you know, see this through to fruition in a financially conscious way. I think when we talk too, just about the expenses going forward, being a growing town, it doesn't just relate to staffing, it also relates into, we have to plan for the new fire truck, for a new facility, for when we have expansive growth in a different area. You can't just have all these police officers and firefighters in one specific, you know, housing unit, you have to be able to have different fire departments around the city. So I think that there's just so much at play. And as somebody, when I served on the Budget Committee, when it used to be a smaller Budget Committee, we would literally go through those 241 pages, line item by line item. I'm talking advertising, I'm talking fuel charges, I'm talking everything for days on end, we would spend our time. So the amount of dedication that we have as a council and as a staff to meet with the directors, to talk about all of their wants and needs, and to slim that down to fit down to our expenditures, and to try to forecast as carefully as we can, it is a very tedious task. It's something that I don't expect the public to be able to do. If it took us days and having multiple meetings with department heads, it's not something that the public is going to very easily catch on to, and I understand that. I think that our job on council is to be able to relay the information in a tangible way to where it's understandable and relatable. And that's where, I think, when something like this comes up, I don't want us to get lost in the idea of we're just going to always raise the taxes. Every single year, we're going through the same budgetary process, we're talking at the same timeframe, like Lisa outlined, where there's tons of opportunities for the public to be involved, and that is a great time to be in those conversations or asking those questions. I think that we're all dedicated to being fiscally responsible, something I've heard over and over and over again. And this, when we talk about some of the questions from Sherri about being, oh, that this, this new tax wouldn't go to funding any type of police or fire, I don't think that's accurate. There is a lot of positions that were wanted by directors to prepare for growth, that were not able to be included because we couldn't financially afford it. So I think that there is some reality of there's, there's, and I say want, meaning that they're trying to forecast for projections as well. Everybody and staff, I know they're dedicated to their position, they're dedicated to being fiscally responsible. I know we all care about that, so this is something that comes with a lot of careful consideration, I guess is my point with that. It's not something that we do haphazardly, without thinking of the full implications, both on the consumer side or the tax, taxpayer side in this, I guess in this situation, but also from the staffing side. So it's a balancing of the two, it's a marrying of those ideas. So, I guess, sorry, again, it was very sporadic, but I had a lot of comments I was holding in.
That's okay. I appreciate you waiting and allowing everybody to speak first, and I hope that provided a little additional clarity. Bonnie Rogers?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Bonnie Rogers. I live at 5672 West Autumn Vista Way, at Anthem Merrill Ranch in the Parkside. And I have recently become involved and been going to stay involved and knowledgeable, learning about what's going on in the town of Florence, attending meetings, whether by Zoom or by, by coming into the meetings. Because I've noticed that for revenue, you know, they want, they want to raise our property taxes. That's fine, it doesn't seem like that it's much, but there's also development, community development that can be done, but they need to do it in an appropriate manner. Now, in the last three meetings that I've been in, well, we've had two storage facilities that people did not want out here, and they got turned down, so that was tax dollars that, or revenue that was not available for us. But then there is also, then there's another mini storage going in over there in, in Florence, in the town of Florence. So I'm just wanting to ask, and I brought this to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Board, what is the possibility of having a task force of volunteers, like they have for the Planning and Zoning Commission, now that we have a new economic development manager, having a volunteer task force of citizens from different areas of the town to recruit, try to find businesses besides mini storage, and other ones that are going to bring revenue into our town, to help our town grow, and be development that's appropriate for that area? Like not having to rezone the back half of, of our, our neighborhood for a mini storage, and the front half of our community for RV storage? Where can we go and find other businesses that'll come in and develop retail, develop medical offices, medical services? I'm a nurse, we are medically underserved in this community at large. We have no assist, very few assisted living facilities, hospice facilities inpatient we don't have, and doctors and like pediatric services in that we are very deficient, I think deficient on, compared to other communities that I have lived in and the communities that I have worked in. So what is the possibility of adding to the agenda in the next meetings, the next town hall, town council meetings, working to develop a special task force to, for recruiting in businesses, not just industrial, but retail and other types of investors who want to take, you know, their dollars and spend it here in our Florence community?
No, I appreciate you speaking up this evening. Actually, that is a program that our previous Economic Development Director was working on. Harvey just started with us, so we want to give him an opportunity to get acclimated, and I would appreciate it if you would, if you could send him an email directly, I'd like you to be able, he's nodding his head, just so you know. So you could be able to connect with him, because that is a vision and a goal that we have, so I want to connect you.
Ms. Garcia, statutorily, I just want to remind you that we're in a public hearing to discuss taxes of the town of Florence, and so I just wanted to make sure that we understood what the subject matter is.
Thank you for the refocus, my apologies. All right. Thank you, Ms. Bonnie. And I see Ms. Har.
This is regarding taxes, Ms. Garcia, so thank you as well for keeping us on track. But I know that Hila River Indian Community provides X amount of money that can go towards our fire department. I know, Mr. Anderson, you said we paid $750,000 for a new fire truck. Are we using our grant riders the way we should be utilizing them to get us grant money that's available to us, that's free, it's not costing anybody any money? Are we reaching out to Hila River? I know part of their Prop 202 was that they provide money to rural communities, which we are. Also, Coacapelli's, I know there was a $30,000 lien, I don't know if that's the exact dollar amount, but I know that's in the ballpark. What are we doing to get that 30,000? That, that would help out. Also, the ordinances, what we've talked about in many of our one-on-ones that we've had with you council, is that our ordinances, if we would hold property owners accountable, there would be fines. Those fines would also help the town of Florence with revenue. By people, if they don't want to hold, hold their end of the deal, or abide by an ordinance, for lack of better words, then they're held accountable, and that's by a fine. And I know there's going to be a work session, I plan on being there along with several of our other community members. So again, that's just some questions that, are we utilizing every- members. So again, that's just some questions that are we utilizing every available resource we have to bring in those funds to our town. Thank you.
Valid question. Now, since this has to do with property tax, and I know Ms. Garcia might look at me a little bit sideways, but bear with me. With the expenditure of money and property taxes, you referenced grants. I will say that within our budget, we have grown tremendously in the amount of grants that we have been able to secure for our community. So again, kudos to that Grants Department because it has increased to, it's into millions.
Yes, it's in the millions. You have ARPA grant, that was significant. So that, but we do, I do want to confirm that, yes, we do capitalize on native grants.
Now, I also want to say to a fault, sometimes our council will rely on grants. And I'm going to go back to when our fire department needed SCBA's, which are life-saving apparatuses for our personnel. And we went three years saying, we'll put in for grants, we'll put in for grants, we'll put in for grants, to the point where we needed to buy them. And that's what we purchased this past month or two ago. So that way, they had that. There is definitely opportunities with grants, and our staff is always pursuing and applying and getting them. Unfortunately, we can't get them for everything. I cannot respond to this time regarding the lien. Again, that's a very public process, but it's not part of this hearing. And that is all for that comment. All right. Councilmember Hughes, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay. Any other councilmembers? Any other citizens? I feel very productive. Mick, come on up.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all of you on the council and the folks that, who here. You've answered my question, and I think I'm prepared now to go back and maybe clarify some of the questions that people have had of me. So I'm grateful to you very much for all the work that you're doing on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. That right there is a true testament of how we all work together as stakeholders. Because again, without community, without council, without our staff, it's not possible. So, thank you. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing presentation and move on to Item C, which is Public Hearing to Receive Citizens' Comments on the Secondary Property Tax for Fiscal Year 2223 for Light Improvement District numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. And first reading of the ordinance number 715-22. This is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinot County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Street Light Improvement Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. This is our secondary property tax public hearing for our streetlight improvement districts. The streetlight improvement districts pay for the electrical costs within each district. And we have seven streetlight improvement districts this year. Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Slid 1 is, proposed levy is .13 per $100 in net assessed valuation. Slid number 2, zero levy because we have adequate funding to cover that. Slid 3, .1328. Slid 4, .8369. Slid 5, $120. Slid 6, $120. And Slid 7, I should have, I should have clarified, slids 1 through 5 are in Anthem at Merrill Ranch. Slid 6 is Mesquite Trails. Slid 7 is Sunrise Estates Phase 2. The last three are just beginning to have property tax value roll in, very minimal amounts. So it'll take at least two years for them to generate any significant amount of property tax value. So that's what our slids are. And again, this is for the levy for 2223 for our streetlight improvement districts.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing so we can hear from any citizens that have any questions or comments. Sherri Har.
My question is this tax, is this for everybody who is in Florence that these taxes are? From 1 through 5 is Anthem, I don't know where Mesquite or Sunrise Estate is located at.
Sunrise Estate is to the east between, it's right along Butte Avenue and the sewer plant on Plant Road. This is not for every single citizen in Florence. It's only for the new development areas that have streetlight improvement districts.
And where's the Mesquite one located at?
Yes, just a second. I'm looking for Chris Solis.
He stepped out.
Yes.
It's down the road and to the right.
Yes, that's what Carl said. I was just trying to confirm.
Correct.
Okay. I didn't hear you guys were talking over each other. I apologize. I didn't hear where Mesquite is at.
Along Felix Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just want to say that this will come back to council on July 5th for adoption.
And again, with these, just as in the past, whatever's brought in is brought out.
Yes.
Did that make sense, the way I said that? Clarify what my thinking is.
It covers six.
Thank you.
The amount that is collected is only collected in the amount that has to be paid to cover the expense of the lighting. And also a note, in historic Florence, your, the lighting fees are paid for by the town of Florence. In Anthem and New Development, the lighting fees are part of the taxes that are assessed to those areas. And it's been a topic of conversation the entire four years I have been on council, because Councilwoman Rodriguez has debated this many times, that there's an unfair balance in the fact that residents in Florence are, theirs are paid for by the town, where residents in Anthem at the time, because there was no new development within the town of Florence, pay for theirs in addition to our tax dollars. So that's always been a heated topic of debate.
Yeah, it's not my favorite subject. But I do want to add that the, the reason for slids is because they are above and beyond the standards that are set from Arizona revised statute as to the requirements of the number of lights. So that's why when you look at a streetlight improvement district, they are much more well-lit. So that is, I do believe in fair taxation where everyone should be a part of the same pot, but I do not, which is my anger against slids. But I do appreciate the lighting, so it's a double edged sword. But yeah, so that's, that's what a slit is and what it comes down to. And like she was saying, anything that comes in has to immediately go back out.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, we're going to go ahead and close that part, and that will be brought back again before us. Next, we have a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for fiscal years 2223. At this time, I will go ahead and open that conversation. The hearing is officially open. Any questions or comments? Going ahead and?
Oh, I was just going to add, so on the budget, we, we had a long, extensive budget meeting. And I will agree with Councilwoman Rodriguez, it was shorter than what we normally do, because normally we kind of spread it out over like two months, I think. And we have meetings, and each meeting is usually about three hours. And every director comes in and they have to pitch to council in a way, why they, or the Budget Committee, why they need what they need. And it is very difficult to sit there and have to tell the fire chief that, no, you cannot have a battalion chief or whatever, because we just don't have the money, or to tell our police chief, no, you can't have those radios because we just don't have the money. So it's very, very difficult. And there are many times, I question all the time, lots of things about vehicles and, because I know that that's a, that's a quick way to, for money to get spent is on vehicles and maintenance and how are we, you know, we're buying our tires from here. Why are we not buying our tires over here? And things like that. And so it, it's a difficult conversation to have and one that none of us have, we don't do it lightly. And we argue amongst each other about what money should be spent and where money shouldn't be spent. And so it, it is a conversation. And I do encourage everybody to come to those budget meetings, because we had a budget meeting. And all of us were there. And unless I'm wrong, we had maybe two community members there. So it, it's encouraged to come to those work sessions because then we get to, when we get to this point, we, we've had a lot of conversations. And so it's hard to now go back and have a conversation that we've already had and we've already hashed out and tried to figure out. So I just want everybody to know budgets is difficult. It's not easy. And you cannot rely on grants because grants is a state funds. And just like everything else, one minute you think you have it, and Kathy Adams knows very well how grants work. One minute you have it and you're all excited for a project, and then the governor says, nope, I want that money spent somewhere else, and your money is gone and your project is no longer in existence. And who knows when it'll come back, especially when it's dealing with the historic buildings and things like that? You could wait another 10 years before that money comes back. So that's the last thing you want to rely on is grants.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in our audience that has any questions or comments? I see Ms. Har online. Go ahead.
Good evening once again. Vice Mayor, I know you indicated something about we should attend work sessions. And Mayor, you also mentioned attending work sessions. I've attended them online when COVID was still under, you know, we were under those guidelines. And we weren't able to participate. I had my hand up the entire time during a work session, not realizing that we can't participate while you guys are conducting a work session. So am I missing something? Are we able to participate and ask questions? Or are we not able to participate and ask questions?
Ms. Garcia, will you restate what it states in our code of our rules of procedure?
A work session is a work session for the town council to discuss items pending before the council, only if the chair does recognize them or the mayor. Are our public allowed to speak? Underneath the open meeting law, the public does have a right to be present. The public does have a right to listen. And, but the participation portion is not guaranteed. Tonight, we do have a public hearing. We've had several public hearings. And the time that citizens are guaranteed to be able to participate is not only at public hearings, but at that three minutes call to the public that is before and after a special meeting or a regular meeting. In the town of Florence, work sessions do not contain a call to the public at this time.
Thank you.
So we, we will not be called on? Is that how I understood that?
Unless directed so.
Unless somebody from the chair or the mayor calls on us? Is that how I understood that?
So the work sessions, as Ms. Garcia stated, are for council, for staff, whoever is at that work session to work through. So public, it is open to at that time. There are other opportunities, if not afforded at that meeting, to communicate because there are always public hearings and presentations.
Okay. That makes no sense, but thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, at the work session, though, that's your opportunity to hear the debate between council and staff as to why we can't do something or why we are going to do something. Then when you come to the public hearing part, you have a better base of what the conversation was. And a lot of your questions may get answered during that work session. And then your questions at the public hearings are more fine-tuned, for lack of better description. And there's a lot of things, like Ms. Ramirez wanted numbers. Well, they were, they were numbers that were provided during the work session that we don't then carry forward because we've already looked at the numbers. So now we're, you know, you have your in-depth meeting, and then your meetings get a little more
Fine-tuned.
Fine-tuned, because now we're just working on, on, yes, we're going to do this, or no, we're not going to do this. But all of that enormous amount of information is given at that work session. So even if you don't get to participate by speaking, you get to participate by listening and taking notes. And then, and then when you come to a public hearing, you are better prepared yourself for that public hearing. And in between those times, that's when you can send emails and ask other questions and get better knowledge because that's what all of us do. In between the work session, the public hearing, now we'll go from the public hearing to the next stage, we're going to be firing questions to our staff about things like, hey, you know, what about this? What are, you know, what do, what, I can't even think of a question right now that I have. But that, that's the best way to make sure that all the questions are being asked. And when the public asks a question to our staff, that question gets relayed back to us as well. It is not something that just stays with staff. Council is informed that somebody from the public asked this question. This was the answer that was given to them, so that we know what communication was given back to the public as well. So we're all trying to be on the same page. It's difficult, though, when we don't have the information that we had because we, we've moved past that part of the, of the conversation. And now we're just fine-tuning and working some of those minute numbers that we're trying to balance out. That was my point of saying, come to the work session so that you can hear the debate that's happening.
You clarified that really well. Thank you. Council, Courtney, Ramirez, come on up.
Hello. Okay, so regarding the, when was the last budget meeting? And how many exactly have you guys had?
All of the dates are usually within our agenda packet of the meetings. I noticed that in this agenda packet, we didn't outline all of the dates. I could go back in a previous one, but do you have it?
No, I have it in my budget schedule, and it's not in here. It would have, I believe it was in May, wasn't it?
March or?
May. It was in May. It was our final.
I'd be happy to email a copy of the budget calendar
Perfect. Thank you. Tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, and you know, it's kind of like, and I don't know if you guys advertise it on Facebook, or if the public's expected to go the City of Florence website every day and look for an update with, with a meeting that the community's welcome to. So, you know, I reached out to you guys the other day, and that was another concern because the community was, was invited to the public meeting for the storage sheds, only the 300, you know, people within 300 feet. And one person went to that meeting. So it kind of goes with, with that, too. So if there's public, you know, meetings that the public can come to, why can't whoever runs the Facebook and Instagram put that on there, too, rather than, if it was, maybe I'm, you know, who knows? But, you know, just quick clarification, just that public meeting that had occurred was not a meeting of our town of Florence?
First, let me clarify, because there's something near and dear to my heart that our IT department does, along with our PIO and the Town Clerk's Office. And that is that we have a page where you can subscribe to news, or you can subscribe to agendas. So not only you can go on and you can enter in your email, and you can say every area of town that you're interested in. And so every time that, if you subscribe, every time that we post a notice, you'll receive an email.
Yeah.
And you receive a link to that agenda. So anytime we're meeting, and so you can go in and you can get the, and anyone that's online right now, or anyone that's watching this later, please go to our website and consider doing it. It's a great way to get really good information. It links to our meetings. It gives you the agendas, the agenda packets, and it makes sure that you know everything. So you can, you can click on council news. So you can, you can click on council news and you can get everything that pertains to the council. You can click on planning and zoning, you can get everything that pertains to planning zoning. You can pick on Clark Parks and events and you can get everything that's related. We want to be transparent, we want to give this information. And if you don't, haven't done it
I do, I do and I get them, but a lot of times it goes into spam and then there's a hundred, you know.
That's something we can't control is how, how the people get it.
I know, but, but it's like if, if, if you guys would just do a public post to, to social media, Facebook, you know, it's, it's again, another avenue to put those meetings out there for the public. I think is important, you know, because not everybody buys the paper, not everybody, you know, checks the website and, you know, just, it's just another avenue to put it out to the public.
And I have seen and I noticed Jeff Graves is online right now and he is our PIO and he does present that information when there's meetings or items of concern. However, we need to be careful as a council and staff in regards to what we commit to saying because there are legalities that are involved. So there are areas that we are legally, because it's how we have it written and documented, that we communicate and post where our meetings are, what the agendas are going to be. And those areas are, Ms. Garcia, I'm going to have you list all of them if you don't mind.
The town of Florence official posting site is 775 North Main Street, that is at Town Hall. The other site that we post at is on the website. Now, if there is a posting that has a statutory requirement, meaning that there is going to be a fine or a fee imposed, then by law, we're required to post it in three locations. Those locations are Town Hall, the fire station that is located in, Fire Station Number Two, and the Police Department has a board out front and those are our posting places for, as well as the website. And those are for anything that has a fine or a fee associated with it, a penalty clause. It's called by state statute, a penalty clause, but it means a fine or a fee associated with the statute.
However, Jeff was, you know, also present for the conversation and will take into consideration opportunities that occur. All right, seeing no further motion for conversation, I'm going to close this public hearing. I'm going to go to item seven, which is adjourned to a special meeting of the Florence Town Council. Item A is a discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 182922, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council, we're happy to present the final budget. It has not changed from the tentative budget that was submitted to you on June.
I'm sorry. I know, we were, we were mouthing because I said I have, I know I have to adjourn, but I was wondering if I should let her speak before I do that or after that?
Well, we, we should adjourn to the special meeting so the actions and the, the
Conversation
Conversation to take place.
Motion to adjourn to a special meeting in the town council.
I make a motion, we adjourn to special meeting.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Ms. Jimenez, please proceed and I apologize.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council, this is our final budget and happy to present it. It has not changed from the tentative budget that was adopted on June the 6th, 2022 in the amount of $59,794,191. We have advertised as required by statute. Our detailed budget has been posted at Fire Station Number Two, Florence Library and Town Hall. And there, again, there has been no changes to the budget.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions, comments? All right, seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 1829-22.
Second.
All right, and this is a roll call vote. Ms. Garcia?
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cordis?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
The vote is carried unanimously.
Thank you and thank you for all of your hard work and effort in putting this budget together, working really hard, our staff. I cannot thank you enough for the information that has been presented and communicated both to council and our citizens.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn from a special meeting of the Florence Town Council?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from our special meeting of the Florence Town Council.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine, we need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item A. Item A is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and first reading of the ordinance number MRCFD-1119-22, an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Penale County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facilities district subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
I'm going to turn this over to Carl Dudding, who manages the districts.
Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board Members. CFD, Merrill Ranch CFD One has two levies. These are secondary property tax levies and not primary. The first levy is the debt service levy and this is to cover payments for regional improvements that the town has already completed and accept, they've already been completed and accepted by the town, excuse me. This levy can only be used to generate the required revenue to make the debt service payments for the upcoming year. The second levy is for ongoing operation and maintenance of the district. The levy rate for debt service is capped at 3.25 per $100 of net assessed value. The admin levy is capped at .3 per $100 of net assessed value. For FY 2223, the debt service levy rate is .8153 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate approximately $330,902 in revenue required to cover debt service payments. The admin debt levy is set at .3 per $100 of net assessed value. This levy will generate approximately $121,767 in revenue. The combined levy rate for Merrill Ranch CFD Number One is 1.1153 per $100 of net assessed value. The combined revenue for both levies is $452,669. And with that, I'll answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Is that any different than what it, what it's previously been?
So the levy, the debt service levy is about $110,000 lower than it was last year and that rate is about 4% lower. The admin rate is firm at .3.
Okay, thank you.
Your bet.
All right, I see no further questions. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing if there's anybody from the public that has any questions or comments. Ms. Bariola?
I can't help but come back after your definition and explanation of what a work session was. That is the reason I included that a work session is not the appropriate action to take for the public works building and associated
Hang on, Ms. Bariola, this isn't the time for that. You can come back at the
I thought this was the public hearing at the end.
This is the public hearing regarding this specific agenda item, so legally I cannot deny
I apologize. I thought you were finished.
No, no ma'am. Are there any questions or comments, public hearing wise regarding this agenda item?
Madam Chairman, I also wanted to let you know that the levy will be adopted on July 5th.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we are going to go ahead and close that public hearing and move to item B, which is our public hearing to receive citizens' comments on proposed final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and possible adoption of resolution number MRCFD-1144-22, a resolution of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Penale County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. At this time, Ms. Becky Jimenez?
Again, I'll turn the, this over to Mr. Dudding.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, Board Members, the annual budget for CFD Number One is $3,160,891. There are four funds in the CFD. There's the CIP fund, that budget is $2.2202,550. Debt service assessment is, budget is $419,056. The debt service for geo bonds is $335,786. And the admin is budgeted at $203,500. Again, that's for a total of $3,160,891. There's been no changes to this budget since we brought it in the budget work session and we have advertised as required.
Thank you for communicating that. Opening public hearing, are there any questions or comments? All right, going ahead and closing public hearing, need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
So moved.
Second.
That has an action. I have an action, public hearing.
No, I need a motion on the budget.
July 5th, I apologize. Did you need an action before we adjourn?
Where it says possible action, we're hoping that the council will adopt the budget.
Apologies, for some reason I, I made a notation for July 5th and that was on the first one, so I wrote my note in the wrong spot. Okay, we do need a motion on this. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, we accept the budget as presented tonight.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item A is to receive public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two and first reading of ordinance number MRCFD-2219-22, an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Penale County, Arizona, to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023. Ms. Jimenez? And I know, I just, because I, it's the process. Mr. Dudding, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, Board Members, like in CFD One, CFD Two has the same levies, the debt service and the admin. Both have the same caps, 3.25 and .3 for a total of 3.55. For FY 2223, CFD Two debt service levy is set at 3.25 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate approximately $981,968. The admin levy is set at .3 per $100 of net assessed value. That will generate approximately $90,643 in revenue. The combined levy rate for Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two is 3.55 per $100 of net assessed value. The combined revenue for both levies generated will be $1,072,611. The adoption of this tax levy will be on July 5th. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Community. Seeing no such move, this will come back before us on July 5th. Item B, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on proposed final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two and possible adoption of resolution number MRCFD-2244-22, a resolution of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Penale County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Ms. Jimenez, who's going to defer to Mr. Dudding?
Madam Chairman, District Board Members?
Mayor, Cliff has a statement.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I didn't, I didn't hear on the last item that the public hearing was opened or closed.
It was, we opened it, I believe it was Councilmember Hughes and then seconded by Councilmember Mendoza.
But did you make an announcement that the hearing was opened and then closed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then I asked if there was any questions from council and then any questions from public. And then I closed it at the end. And then this is item B and you just reviewed the figures.
Yep.
Did you have additional?
Just wanted to let you know there's four budgets in the CFD Two. The CIP budget this year is, budget is $9,681,968. Debt service for the assessment is $285,144. Our geo bond debt service is $737,413 and the admin is $77,500 for a combined budget There's been no changes to this budget since it was last brought and it's been advertised as required.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Are there any questions from public at this time? From council? Seeing no such move, closing the public hearing and we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the budget for CFD Two.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of the March 7th, 2022 and March 21st, 2022 town council meeting minutes. Item B, receive and file the following advisory board and commission minutes. One, community service advisory board minutes for May 12th, 2022, planning and zoning commission minutes for April 7th, April 21st and May 19th, 2022. And item C is to accept the registered demands ending May 31st, 2022 in the amount of $4,837,899 and 27 cents. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like removed at the time? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
Make a motion to move, or to approve the consent items as read.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 14, new business. Item A is discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a contract with ClearGov Software for Budgeting Capital Improvement Plan, Budget Book and Citizen Transparency Portal Software for three fiscal budgeting cycles in an amount not to exceed $116,400. Mr. Carl Dudding?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is a timely topic. Each October, the finance director, town manager, deputy town manager Each October, the Finance Director, Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager, and Department Directors start building the budget and the CI plan. That process takes about nine months. Our budget book and our CIP books, they're made up of many spreadsheets and PDF and Word documents. We, Ally in our department, right at the end of the budget season, probably spends three or four days pasting spreadsheets and PDFs together to prepare the budget book to bring to you. And you can always count for last-minute revisions and corrections and added work. Our current process is very manual, dated, and labor-intensive. Last year, we started investigating for some possible budgeting software to assist us in this, and we honed in on two programs, and they rose to the top, and we selected ClearGov and are requesting approval to move forward with that software. If approved, this tool will provide staff a single platform to collaborate, enter budgets. Everything will be done in real time. Public Works enters data. Becky will see it instantaneously. It has routing, she'll be able to approve or reject it. It'll go to the Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager. In addition to that, the software we're seeking, that is the backend for management. This tool also has a public-facing component to it. And citizens will be, once the budget work session is open, citizens will be able to log in, see the proposed budget. There'll be charts and graphs. They'll be able to drill down. They'll be able to create a book on demand, a PDF book if they want. They can email it to themselves. And I don't know what else we saw. I
Carl's making our work easier.
Yeah. I don't have access to the backend. If you guys are interested in seeing a demo of the frontend, no? Okay.
No, I love that you are finding effective softwares that make your lives and your work easier, as well as providing that transparency and, you know, being able to continuously communicate that amongst staff, councils, and community when that comes forward.
It's just going to create a very professional-looking budget book. Instead of the numerous pages we have here, it can be modified to compile information, provide graphs and comparisons. So I think it's a great thing that he's doing.
Yes, you have me at graphs. I'm visual.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was just gonna say, I think I, if it's the same one that I've used, that was also named the same program that ClearGov, it is very easy to use and very user-friendly to, I believe it even had a search capability as well, so you can search through documents. So say if you're looking at four specific things, certain departments, you can search through there to be able to find where that's all at. So it makes the whole experience from a citizen's perspective so much easier, and to be able to compare it to other different government, governmental entities as well. So I really have had a good experience. Again, if we have the same program capabilities as other municipalities with this program.
All right, seeing no further questions or comments, we need a motion. Oh, I apologize, I did not see you. Councilmember, go ahead.
You say that the financial impact is going to be $116,000 over three years. What will be the net savings if this is so efficient? I would think we would have some savings in here somewhere and within the department.
Mayor, Councilman Anderson, I don't see any FTE savings immediately, but I do know when we implement efficiencies like this, those savings come in the future. And as we grow, bringing on additional staff, and Becky might be able to.
Well, I just want to expand a little bit on that, because what happens is
Can't hear you.
During the budget time, when I'm working on budget, I don't work on anything else except for budget. We used to, my position before I took Finance Director was budget analyst. This will free up time for me to focus and other staff members, especially on our CIP too, because it's, also does that, to focus in on other aspects of our work and be more detailed. I jump from budget directly into audit, so we have a savings of stress and time and a more efficiency as far as staff internally in my department would be.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Item 14A.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B is discussion approval/disapproval of a Federal Emergency Management Agency Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communications Grant Agreement EMF 2020 BR-193-0001 for the Florence-Ghilo River Flood Hazard Mitigation Project in the amount of $112,500. Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This project actually predates the pandemic, and we have been in the queue to receive funds for, I think approximately, three years, if memory serves correctly. This project is to, the idea behind this project is to provide dollars for communities for flood hazard mitigation. So one of the areas that we're looking at partnering is the area with CoreCivic in Pinal County. That part is in a floodplain, and then the building that we're in now and Fire Station One are in a floodplain. So this will help ease some of the burden, because generally speaking, flood control projects are paid out of the general fund. So whenever we can get dollars to assist us in these types of projects, there's benefit. And as well as hopefully that somehow there'll be something, probably not expressly, but hopefully there's some synergy between this project and when we start moving forward on our Loma project with Phase One, it should be the same consultant, the same consultant has worked in this entire watershed since the very beginning. And with that, are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
No.
Now, I, yes, your patience with this project has been quite extensive, and congratulations on being successful. So with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the Federal Emergency Management Agency Building Resilient Infrastructure and Committee Grant Agreement FMF 2020-BR-193-0001.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is to receive and file the Certificate of Necessity, known as the CON, feasibility study update. This item is for information only. James Walter.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, wanted to take a quick minute to apologize for you for being up here. Normally, I'm in my Class A uniform, but since the adoption of our new town seal, we didn't act as quickly as our counterparts in the fire, or in the police department. Our newly designed patches are now at a tailor in town being added to all of our uniforms, so I apologize that we don't have it tonight. Hopefully, we'll be presenting those to you in the near future. But thank you, thank you for that moment. I'll give you a little background and discussion on the CON. A work session was held on November 19th, 2019, to discuss the town providing ambulance service. According to Arizona Revised Statute 36-2233, any person wishing to operate an ambulance service in this state shall apply to the Department of Health Services for a certificate of necessity, otherwise known as the CON. This process was outlined by Roy Riles, who works with the James Vincent Group. Council at that time approved the professional services agreement with the James Vincent Group to conduct the certificate of necessity, or CON, feasibility study for limited ambulance services. As this service has never been provided by the town of Florence, a financial analysis was necessary to evaluate the impact of starting and maintaining ambulance transport services through the fire department. The model that is currently under evaluation would not take on the full responsibility of ambulance transport by the town. The fire department would simply add capacity to the response that is currently in place with AMR. By obtaining a CON, it would allow the town and department the ability to transport citizens to the hospital, either during specific times of the day or during times that AMR has limited resources available. With the current financial climate of the town, adding a program and process like this would be difficult. As we hope to recover from the permanent base adjustment, this is a future program for consideration. It would benefit the town as having the ability to provide service to our citizens and recover costs through reimbursement. Through this presentation, the council will have the opportunity to review the documents and formulate questions as we move closer to the time of implementation. This is not a decision of how the department will provide service or the impact on the town, just a presentation of the study that was paid for. When the finances are available and feasible to match the growth that the town is experiencing, this will be an enhancement in service that would be presented. As many other municipalities have entered models that would require them to obtain a CON, the town of Florence would evaluate the ability to maintain the service using a feasibility study provided by the James Vincent Group.
I wanted to take this time to thank the fire department for bringing forth this study to be able to be received and filed. It was a long time coming for council, and I also wanted to thank them for the fiscal analysis that was done by both the fire department and the finance department. And I also wanted to state that as we receive and file this report, that in the future, when this comes back for council consideration, it will not be this report that will be looked at, because our stats will have to be updated at that time. So as we grow, as our demographics change, then so will the items within this report. So it was a great study for the town of Florence to look at, for to be able to consider, but at this time, as the chief stated, we're asking for the council to merely receive and file the report.
Just for clarification, when you say receive and file, does that mean that if we were to look at this again, the entire study would need to be reconvened, or could they update the numbers using the same?
I think that it would definitely be a conversation we would have at the time that council is looking at it. It depends on if it's a year, two years, or five years from today on when we're doing, doing the study and relooking at it, as if it, what is the best process? It also depends on if the group is still available at the time that we are looking at it. One of the most interesting things was to be able to have a look at consideration of what it would be required to be able to do it. It assisted both the fire department, the police, and the administration with having a comprehensive understanding of what it would take to make sure that we are not subsidizing those services, and that was invaluable, to be able to have that information. I believe it was a growing opportunity for all involved, and underneath both our current permanent base adjustment situation, but also in the level of service that we provide to our citizens, that I think we all came to the table and said, now is definitely not a time to proceed on this on all fronts, but it is a, it is a report that was paid for with taxpayer dollars, so it should be received, it should be filed, and it should be a public record.
All right. Council, any other questions or comments?
No.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you. Item 15 is our second call to the public at this time. If there's anybody who has anything to say? Closing the second call to the public, and call to the council. Councilmember Mendoza?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Hughes?
Last week, I attended a few meetings. I participated in the Pinal County Water Augmentation Authority. That's still something we do on Zoom, but, and they're going, they're still talking about the shortage and how we're going to be coming into a Tier Two. And, and so that's something that's not going away, and it looks like it's going to continue to maybe even a Tier Three by the year 2025. So it is something that is going to be with us for a long time, and we have to work with our regional area to find out how we can best serve Pinal County with water. I also stood in for the Vice Mayor that couldn't make Pinal Partnership, and myself and Councilmember Anderson went to, went to that last Friday, and that was with local representatives, and they were talking about regionally what they're doing in Pinal County. It was very informative. And then last Thursday, I went to Arizona at work, and it was challenging the status quo for workforce development, and that was very eye-opening and unfortunately, a little scary about how under, we're there, we don't have enough employees. They're having a hard time trying to find employees that want to work. And it was, it was an interactive, so they took all, they gave us all questions, and then we supplied answers. So it was, it was a full day, but it was, it was very good, so. I think that across the board, that Pinal County, we're learning that we have to work as a unit. It's not just one town, but we regionally have to interlock with each other to help spread and use our funds and finances frugal. So it was really good. And the last thing is, today is the American Eagle Day, and so it is the national bird and the national animal of the United States, and it's our seal.
Thank you, I did not know that. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Anderson?
A couple of things. One, I did attend the Pinal Partnership with Councilmember Hughes. The interesting thing that was brought up was, you know, the state and county have been collecting taxes for the North-South Corridor, the RTA thing, and they've got something like $87 million in the bank that they don't know what they're going to do with, because it's, you know, the way that the courts have ruled on it, it is so confusing, and they're trying to get, you know, the county attorney to file some suits to try to get it cleared up, but we're still, I would say, years away before we will get that cleared up as far as the money that's in the bank. The county supervisors will have on the ballot in November, right, a clarification that will allow us to collect that money for the highway and supposedly overcome the current legal, legal problem. So that was sort of an interesting thing going on. The other thing that I would like to do is, you know, we had a lot of people here tonight, and I'm sorry to say that we emptied most of the audience, because I want to thank everybody for coming and expressing their opinions tonight, and I want to thank our volunteers, you know. Several people talked about, you know, all the volunteer efforts that we have, that we're feeding a lot of people, and we have a we're feeding a lot of people, and we have a lot of people that come down and box up food and help pass out food to the needy people in town, and that's just an outstanding effort that's going on, and I want to thank all those volunteers who show up to do that. Other thing that, you know, that we didn't emphasize tonight, and when we talked about all this taxes and everything, we didn't quite hit on all the lost revenue that we're doing because of the, the shared revenue that we're losing because of the prisons moving out. We've sort of got used to that, right? That we're, that we're trying to adapt that into our budget, but that's going to affect us in the future, so I just don't want to overlook that. The other thing I wanted to ask Chris to do, as part of this question that came up tonight, I'd like to see us put together a street plan and put it up on the website of what our street plans are for the next, you know, say, three years, what's going to happen on the different intersections and, you know, the different, different highways that we're working with. I know a lot of it's dependent on ADOT, but we can say that we've submitted requests to ADOT to do this and do that, and just have one place that people can go to find out what's going on with our streets. So I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I made a mess right here. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Hughes for going for me to Pinal Partnership. I don't even remember why I couldn't attend, but clearly I didn't attend. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming. I know sometimes you might not think that we enjoy your public remarks, but we do enjoy them. It gives us something to debate, other than just the seven of us. I did want to talk briefly about the flower pots on Main Street, and just remind everybody to please beautify your box, I being one of them, because mine was destroyed, and I didn't think I was getting a new one, because I didn't ask for it, and then all of a sudden it popped up. So I have lacked on that. But it is difficult in the summertime to grow anything in them, so I would like for the committee to really think about that. It is very difficult in the summertime for those of us that do have those boxes to maintain flowers, even if we use ones or plants that are good in the heat. They still, because those boxes, I think, are concrete, or whatever material they're made of, it is absorbing the heat and it's drying them out super fast. So I have suggested on several occasions, as one of the people who sponsors the box, that the town should share in the expense of taking care of those boxes, because they're pretty expensive. I, on average, spend over a hundred dollars every time I have to redecorate it, so I think it would be nice for the town to help us water them, and not just in the summertime. Throughout the year, I think it would be nice for the town to help us water them, so that they're not dying, and then we're able to have real plants for, I'm not a fan of fake flowers, but I realize that that's, in the summertime, the easiest thing to do. Other than that, everybody have a great weekend, and yeah, that's it.
I thought you were going to segue into Fourth of July and all the exciting opportunities that we have here in Florence that I am so appreciative of, especially when there's other communities that, you know, they're not having it on the Fourth of July. So I encourage everybody to come on out, enjoy a safe, fun, family event. I want to say thank you ahead of time to Ally and to our police and fire, because you'll be there providing, you know, safety and public. What is it?
Michael Groves.
Yes, and Michael Groves. He not only does the fireworks, but he also is the gentleman that lights up Main Street, so he's, he's always bringing bright lights to Florence. I also just wanted to make a note, when we were talking about transportation earlier. We will have Supervisor Sertie attending our second meeting in July. He is one of our new county supervisors due to the redistricting, so I know there's a lot of transportation questions, but that'll give us a face in our community of who we can also communicate with. Everything else that I had on my notes has already been mentioned this evening, so that is all that I have, other than thank you to everybody who attends. As you know, we value our communication and participation, so I believe that this has been wonderful. We do have an executive session this evening, so at this time, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.